Special work session on ongoing conversations related to ARPA funding distribution. So I'll go ahead and start with this pledge of allegiance and do a prayer by Pastor Daryl Peterson of Grace Christian Church.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Peterson?
Good morning.
Mark, good morning.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you as we come before you today. Father, the world is such a mess. So many things are in such trial and tribulation. And Father, families are hurt and people are hurt. And Father, the fire department, we just pray for them. We pray, Lord God, for the blessings over them and wisdom and understanding to know what to do and how to do. So many crises within that, within the community, Father. And Father, we just thank you for recovery. We thank you, Father God, for things to turn around. And Father, for the wisdom to know what to do and how to get it done. And I just thank you, Father. But most of all, I thank you for our leadership. I thank you, Father God, for the chief of police, the chief of the fire department, Father. They're fabulous people, leading the people within this city and the community. Now, thank you, Lord God, as Reno County Commissioners, we lift them up. And Father, we just thank you, as your word says, that we are to seek wisdom. With wisdom, get understanding. And Father, so many decisions to be made. Sometimes I wonder how they even make decisions. They're so big and so grand and whatever. But I just pray, Father, for wisdom. With the wisdom to get understanding of how to do and what not to do, and the blessings to things that's right to do. And I thank you, Father, for them taking the ability, Lord God, to lead this, lead this county, lead this meeting, that, Father, it's a blessing to you, but a blessing to the community as well. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The agenda has one item today, and I, that's good and bad, I think. Appreciate the public and the audience's patience here as we continue to work through a fairly detailed and complicated process related to how we're going to distribute roughly $12 million in ARPA funds from the county's perspective. I know we have some leading contenders and some categories that we're looking at. I think Commissioner Sellers had a good point to perhaps have the audience introduce themselves so we know who's here as stakeholders, and we'll do that in a moment. It's a good idea. I might pause for a moment and get the commission's thoughts on how the agenda should flow, since we don't have a lot of details here. So, you know, I think we could start with intros again. You know, I think there's some challenges related to listening to specific projects ahead of our decision-making of how we're going to allocate funding in different buckets. And so I think, on one hand, it's good to hear all of the ideas so we can help formulate where those allocations should be. On the other hand, I think it may be a little bit, you know, the cart in front of the horse to decide individual projects before we even know how we want to allocate it from a broader perspective. So I would encourage us to perhaps do the intros, and then let's talk here for a moment on how you want to, if you want to just hear specific projects and let everybody speak, or if you want to talk more broadly about how we allocate things. Randy, do you have any additional comments on that before we hear from the other commissioners?
Well, I think there, obviously, there are people here that have shown up to explain their project, their request. So I think it is important for them to be heard. But one of the things that you guys had commented on at the very beginning of this process is there's, you know, your priorities for economic development, housing, and childcare. So maybe worth you guys focusing on those to begin with, and then the other items come out at future time. That's just my thought, even if you don't allocate the exact buckets today.
Okay. Commissioner Sellers, you have thoughts?
I'd like to hear from the people that want to speak today, but I would like to keep the meeting moving so that they can be brief. We all have summaries of their proposals unless there's new ones that are here today. And it seems like we get new ones every day. To me, that's disappointing at this point in time. It seems like that people had plenty of time to make requests at this point in time. But I'm willing to hear details of people that have new requests, and then the commission asks questions of any of the participants. It'd be great. Looking forward to the meeting.
Commissioner Sellers, Commissioner Hurst?
Yeah. Little did I dream, and likely any of all of us up here dreamed that we'd be involved in anything like this a year or two ago. But one thing I would like to say is, as we look at these three different buckets that we have up here, primarily of our interest, that maybe we can, that the people who speak can coordinate with how one relates to another. For instance, how childcare and housing relate to economic development. How, if there's a couple of people that have the same interest in an area of either how they work together or how they differentiate, and what the advantages are in both ideas, both structures, okay? Whether it's housing or whether it's economic development or what it is. That I, I think we're all in this together, and there is some correlation between each one of these entities of housing and childcare and economic development that really help each other and correlate with each other. And so from that aspect, that's kind of what, one thing that I would like to have looked at. Daniel?
That's a good point, Commissioners. That would make our job a little easier if the stakeholders work together, and I know they have been doing that already, so appreciate that point. So what we might do now is, you know, if you don't mind saying who you are and who you represent, and maybe say if you would like to speak today, and I'll start a list. And we'll just go around the room. John, you want to start?
John Green, Hedges.
You want to speak?
No.
Okay.
Clint Nelson, Interfaith Housing. We've submitted the Housing Impact Plan proposal and do have some follow-up information if there's a speaking opportunity.
Okay. Thanks, Clint.
Bradford Wiles, I'm with K-State Research and Extension, and I would like to speak on childcare.
Thanks.
Chelsea Dawson with the Hedges Chamber, I will be speaking today.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Carrie May with Hutchinson Community Foundation, I'll speak if there are questions.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie.
I'm Aubrey Abbott Patterson with the Hutchinson Community Foundation, here to support the process.
Aubrey.
Lisa Gleason with United Way of Reno County, I would speak if there were questions.
Ashley Webster, I'm with Casito Kits ITSN Program. I'm here to speak on the childcare systems improvement.
My name's Heather Faulkner. I'm the Director of Abundant Life Childcare here in town, and here would like to share just a little bit on childcare.
Heather?
Good morning, Moore with Interfaith Housing and Community Services, and I, Clint or I, either one can speak.
Thanks. I'm Pastor Daryl, I've already spoke, and I believe in God's wisdom will work through all the people.
Amen.
Denise Gilliland, United Way of Reno County, and I chair a K-Ready, and yes, I will be speaking.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Penny Stoss. I'm with the Hutchinson Regional Healthcare System, and we're, have a submission for, to go under the umbrella of the early childhood programming as an example of what one of those systems could look like, and I'm just here to answer questions if needed.
Mark Howell with SCED, and we presented a proposal, and so we can certainly answer any questions that you may have and talk through it at length or whatever you'd like to hear.
Mark.
Julia Westall with SCED, and just here to answer any questions regards to her proposal.
Julia?
Lacey Stafford with Interfaith Housing and Community Services. I will answer any questions if needed.
Megan Niemeyer with Salvation Army Pathway of Hope, and I am just here to learn the resources and see what is decided.
Okay. Thanks, Megan. So I tried to write all that down. I didn't. I used your computer this morning. That would have been even worse, I think. I think what we can do is, I saw some groupings, and maybe we can talk in groups, if that's okay with commissioners. And I heard a lot related to housing and childcare, for sure. And we might do those first, and then there's a few others. And it sounded like a lot of you were here just for supportive feedback and questions we had, so maybe we'll do this in steps. So if you're here to present and you'd like to kind of do a formal presentation, if you could, since we have most of the information already, if you could keep it to a five-minute summary, that would be wonderful. So let's start with housing. Anybody that wanted to speak on housing, feel free. Do you guys want to start?
We're just here to answer any questions, so.
Clint?
Yeah, thanks for having me. Let me be brief. I just wanted a quick follow-up on our original proposal. Leading up to the second study session, we really wanted to schedule meetings with council and local groups, all the rural communities, really get out there and talk to them about what their needs were, drive and tour the communities. I can say my takeaway from our last month of conversation throughout Reno County is a lot of these small communities, there's a volume of work that really needs to be accomplished. I feel the, most of these groups were surprised that we showed up and we were potentially offering, you know, the funds and also our time and resources to kind of help them, help work with them and guide them through some of their housing condition needs. Well received. I will say, as I look across this list, I feel like we did ask for a very large sum of money, and I want to clarify that that is stretched over a four-year initiative. And I believe that in most of these smaller communities, if there's not an adequate fund to support our cause, I don't know that we're really going to accomplish the long-term impact that we're hoping to accomplish. So we feel confident, we feel that we can carry out the Housing Impact Plan as proposed. That's really all I wanted to add, just that we've been out there roots on the ground, talking to communities, and it was well received. I think they're primed and ready for some engagement and some assistance.
Any questions for Clint? Clint, one quick question. Your proposal suggests that in addition to the funds that we might allocate, that you think that there's other resources and things that you can go to to even grow the program from what our allocation would be. Would you explain that briefly?
Yeah, so the state's just starting to work on their allocation plan for their home ARPA funds. That's one fund that we would seek to access and leverage into the county funds. We have had conversations with other like agencies that do tremendous housing work, and if there are opportunities to partner, and ensuring the inspection, rehabilitation, some of those similar activities, we would certainly like to partner, at any opportunity we can find. Small communities, there wouldn't be access to rural development funds. One constant that we were hearing and surprisingly hearing in some of these very small rural communities is, you know, they've got an aging population, and they would welcome a very small senior housing development if there was an opportunity to develop that. And we're talking, you know, six to eight units, just kind of a pilot to see if there's a need for it. But yeah, a lot of elderly living in homes that they can't maintain, and that same message of, we would love to find them a suitable place, but they, we want to keep them in the community. So I think with our, along with rehab and helping them establish their own housing groups, I think we could look at some new development as well.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yeah. Just looking at the proposal, and didn't look at it before the meeting, okay, but just the original one. And from what I heard from rural communities is that you were talking primarily with doing exterior upgrades such as siding and painting. Went on doing anything else besides just this? That's what they brought up to me. So I just, like, explanation of how in-depth you get on some of these, such as insulation and things like that.
Yeah, so one night we did one council at six, and then we did Sylvia Council at seven. And the two communities had very different ideas of what their needs were. So I, in our plan, we didn't necessarily detail out, this is what we're doing and this is the cost to do it, but this is what we're offering to the communities in partnering with them to identify the need. So I believe every one of these communities are going to participate if there's adequate funding. We would like for them to kind of lead the charge. This is what we feel like we need. Are there roofs out there that need to be replaced? Absolutely. Are there houses that need to be demolished? Yes. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work to be done. Even if we had a couple hundred thousand for every rural community, it's just going to be a starting point. You know, we hope that we can knock out some of the worst properties. There are some, as you drive around town, that really catch your eye that need to, need to go. Abbeville, there are two worst properties are just east of the rodeo, and so every time they have people come in, that's what they're looking at. Yeah, and so we were already brainstorming with that local group, how do we make an attractive offer and acquire those properties, because the owner is the holdout. So, you know, we're, we're offering up our services for whatever the need is. Nickerson, there's, you know, a grouping of properties that you're going to have to get creative in how you acquire those, you know, and renovate them or remove them, whatever the, whatever the need is there. So, but yes, back to your, I guess, let me think back to your question. Painting, we absolutely would like to establish a brush-up program in any community that has volunteer resources. We would like to take on roof replacements and siding and those exterior things. We would love to partner with other agencies to dive deeper into the rural mechanical needs of the property as well. And well, SCED's up there. SCED has a wealth of experience and knowledge on housing improvement, so we would love to partner with the SCED or like agency.
Clint, thank you. The report or request that you put in was very detailed, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you tried to allocate funding by population a little bit, and it looked like there was a substantial amount that was going into the city of Hutchinson, but we didn't leave the rural communities out or the unincorporated areas, so appreciate that. I'm hopeful that, you know, kind of to Commissioner Hurst's point of like, what is it specifically that's going to happen here? I appreciate, again, your point about expanding or leveraging funding and getting other grant dollars, because it seems like we have a significantly larger challenge with housing than even 4.465 million dollars. And creating a program that has some sustainability and models that people can replicate, I think is really important through this process.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd you know, we're a participating member of SCED, as well as I've been associated with Interfaith Housing before. And so I guess I would ask how we could, how the organizations can work together, and maybe Julia or Mark has some comments. And you, I know you've already been discussing with them how this would, hopefully how this would work.
I don't want to speak on SCED's behalf. I think, like all nonprofits, our staff capacity is stretched just with our current services. So I think we're all going to be a bit protective of how much we commit, you know. But yeah, we can work through that, absolutely. I think there is, you know, there's, the likelihood of success and long-term impact, if we can partner together, is going to be much.
The plans are a little bit different.
Yes, sir.
And I think there's a place for each one in the fact of what you're doing and what SCED's doing.
I agree.
A little different aspect on both. And so that's just.
Comment. Yeah. I think Commissioner Hurst, your point is well taken, to the extent agencies of like interests could solve that issue for us. I don't think we want to be the arbiter of competing applicants if possible, so.
We'll continue that conversation, absolutely. And Commissioner Friesen, you had mentioned the kind of ratio of funds and how we look to budget those based on population. I would plug this in as well. If, at the end of your decision-making, you feel like that overall request is not, you know, available, I would ask to keep the rural piece at the level that we requested. I don't know that a lesser amount is really going to be even a starter for these small communities.
That makes sense. Thanks, Clint, appreciate it. Anybody else that wants to speak on housing? We've got that. If you want to come to the podium and just state your name and who you're with, we can have it on the record. Mark Howell, SCED.
Julia Westall, SCED.
We just thought we'd answer any questions. So real briefly, the Housing Resurgence Program is designed to take kind of that middle income, provides some of that middle-income housing, to work with the cities to find some houses that are condemned or untaxed, sell, and come in and completely remodel those to a standard that would be cosmetically attractive, but also you look at how weathered insulated. So we really want to provide a home for an owner occupant that's going to be 20 years of maintenance-free living. The idea is also provide $5,000 for a down payment assistance. So it's, and we feel like this is a sustainable model that we can do. So we are certainly willing to have conversations about partnering and those kind of things. But it's a little bit different flavor, maybe, than what we've seen other organizations provide. And again, the whole idea is that we feel like what we're seeing as a need is for teachers, you know, fire people, those kind of things, to have that middle-income housing stock. There seems to be a challenge in getting developers come in and build some of that. So if we can take some of the older stock and redo that, we feel like that we can make this a sustainable program that will go long past the grant period. So anyway, that's very briefly an overview of kind of what it looks like. If there's any questions you guys have, we'd be happy to talk through that.
Thank you. Let's speak briefly about the timing of your part if this was granted. I think we've got, tell when, Randy, to expend the monies.
End of 2024 to allocate in, end of 2026 to perform on the money.
Does that work for what you're?
It does. So if you think about what SCED's really good at, so we've got the weatherization team that does a lot in Reno County as it is, and we've got a staff that's got a ton of expertise. So what we're really good at, and you jump in because you know more than I, but we've got people with decades of experience, so, and we've got contractors that'll work, and we've got the ability to buy goods at wholesale, so we're really good at going and fixing up houses. We do that obviously all day long now, but to do one to remodel, to sell to an owner occupant, it's something we feel we can do. Again, the key on this is coming up with the housing stock. So we have to do it. We can't compete with investors to buy houses. We've got to find ways to get those at under-market, which we hope to work with the cities. But once we, once we identify those houses, we're very good at what we do.
I mean, basically, when he talks about our experience and stuff, between our certifications with all our inspectors, we have to have special certifications with our weatherization, with our building performance inspections, as well as our HQSs, which is that 20 years of not having to do any renovations or any upkeep, because we're going to go in and do that, a complete assessment, along with our lead testing and things like that. So we do feel very strongly that we have a great model that would be able to be completed in a timely manner.
Commissioner Hurst?
If they've got any more questions, they can contact Julie up at 30th Street, right?
Absolutely.
Hey, guys. Explain to me your budget and request. SCED will provide $25,000 in seed money and a $5,000 down payment assistance for closing, for buyer closing. This will result in $125,000 investment from SCED in the project. I'm not seeing that relationship there. If.
So we've got some money set aside as an organization to buy and flip houses, basically, to these owner occupants. And so of that funds that we have, we were going to allocate $25,000 towards that, along with the money from Reno. And then our intention is not to sell houses at maximum value, that what we wanted to do was, because we want to sell these to owner-occupied individuals and families, that we would take, if, let's just say for round numbers, the property's worth $100,000, we're going to sell for $100,000, but we're going to turn around and gift $5,000 to the buyer, which can either be used for down payment assistance, closing cost, and hopefully, we actually, we'd also like to partner with some other down payment assistance programs so that maybe these buyers can avoid PMI, and then they're going to be in a position to be in those house for five years. So we're trying to find a complete solution. So what we're essentially doing is giving a profit out of it and then providing a little bit of seed money. We don't have enough seed money to do this on a scale at the level we need to. So obviously, when you do a home, if we've got enough seed money to do four or five houses at home, that's so much faster than doing one at the home. So, and there's economies of scale with our contractors there, and there's also with our inspection. So that's what this thing, we've got a little bit of money to contribute, obviously, with the funds that we would ask Reno, and then we're going to give back by not maximizing profit out of it and only selling to owner occupants. So that's, that's how we're trying to help. We're certainly open to modifications and changes, but that's what we came up with as a way to help, help folks in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak on housing? Childcare. Somebody want to start off?
Yes.
Thank you for giving us the time today to look at the importance of early childcare and education and the difference it could make in our community in the short and long term. Childcare specifically is a complex issue, and local partners have been studying the challenges and making incremental investments in our local system since 2015. We understand that we cannot wait until the childcare market study is complete this fall to submit a detailed proposal, considering the multiple and specific funding requests you already have. In that spirit, I'm here to propose, to present a proposal that will allow you to make ARPA allocations down while also giving early childhood stakeholders the opportunity to complete the market study and work towards sustainable and systemic solutions long-term for our community. I would like to introduce you to three of our core partners today. Heather Faulkner is the Administrative Director of Abundant Life Childcare and Preschool. She's going to speak to the challenges she faces as a longtime provider. Ashley Webster is an infant and toddler TA specialist with Kansas Childcare Training and Opportunities Program, or CASITO. She can speak to what not investing in childcare now could cost our community in the future. And Dr. Bradford Wiles is the Associate Professor and Extension Specialist in Early Childhood Development at Kansas State University. He's leading. He's leading our childcare market study and can speak a little bit about the importance of the process and the outcomes we might expect. Once they're done, I will come back and go over the specifics of the proposal.
Good morning. I'm long-winded, so I wrote it down so that I would be cognizant of y'all's time.
I don't need to put a primer.
Yeah, listen. My dad's a pastor, so I come by pretty naturally. We understand that this is complex, that it's large. We know this, and it's why we're here, it's why we've put in a very large ask. The question is, how do we do it? How do we fix this? How do we make this sustainable? How do we solve this problem, not just for the city of Hutchinson, but what does that look like in our rural communities where childcare is a struggle? We, as a center, have had families drive from Sterling to Hutchinson to drop off their children, and then drive to Lyons to go to work every day. And what that cost is on a family. So I get asked every day, what's the true cost of childcare? Well, how do you put in perspective the cost of that family that sits in a car, additional hours, because there's no childcare slots available in Sterling or Lyons? And though those are cross-county lines, our counties and communities are close-knit together. And so our hope is that through some of the things that we're going to work through, that we could take our market study and drill down into those issues and really understand what those challenges are, not just as a center provider, but the majority of our industry is home providers. We've got a large fraction of that that's in rural communities. And a one-size-fits-all is not going to work. And so we need to do the work, not to identify the problem, we all know the problem, but to really identify what are solutions that work in each one of those different areas. As you've seen through the handout that Denise is going to give you, we've done a lot in our community to address that. And yet, the reality is, we just don't have enough information to fully understand that cost, to ensure that we have given a full understanding to the fundamental components required, to create a comprehensive, high-quality, early childhood education system that supports childrens, parents, providers, and our businesses. To do so, we're proposing we go through this process. Most of the time, when we talk about this topic, we primarily focus on improving access, affordability, and we like to throw in the word quality. Who doesn't want accessible, affordable, and quality childcare? Seems like a great marketing strategy. The only thing is, I've never been told for anything except for seeking funding to pay the multitude of faceless, countless women, mostly, in our communities who have given their lives to care for the most precious and vulnerable assets of our community. Childcare is substantially funded through low teacher pay and inadequate support for those that provide that care. This reality has a direct impact on several of the challenges the childcare industry is facing. The lack of financial professional support for the sector of our workforce compromises the consistency and quality of childcare we, our children receive. Today, we're going to share briefly with you what those impacts could look like for the future of our communities. We're poised here in Reno County to do significant efforts with the significant efforts that we've made over the last decade to disrupt the status quo and ensure we find systematic and sustainable solutions that'll address these challenges, that will help not stall our economic growth, nor will it be built at the expense of our childcare providers. As Denise shared, I've worked for Abundant Life for 22 years. Abundant Life could not have survived the last 25 years if it weren't for the fact that it's owned and operated by a small business, a local church, who believes in investing in our community and the future of our community, and quite simply refused to build a 44,000-square-foot building and use it twice a week. This small business has many times than exactly what all small businesses do. They eat the cost today to simply pray and hope they'll survive tomorrow. Today, Abundant Life cares for 142 children, employs 29 full-time and part-time employees. We've estimated that over the course of 25 years, we've cared for 5,500 children in our community. We've employed over 500 employees. We've invested in the families of Reno County, not simply by paying salaries, but assisting with utility bills, rent, buying groceries, providing mental health care, medical needs for struggling parents and employees who don't have access to healthcare benefits. We, like most small businesses, have done this on limited budgets and lots of prayer. We've considered on three occasions over 25 years to close our doors due to the financial struggle that is the childcare industry and the added pressure and stress that comes with the regulatory aspect of the childcare industry. I've personally been asked and assisted several local facilities that have either tried to open or were just struggling. And there's a couple of statements I always say to them. Number one, you've got to be crazy to get into the childcare business. Absolutely insane. And if you think you're going to make money, you should quit now and go do something else. And number three, I can't tell you what to do to be successful, but I can give you a list of things you should never do. A challenge that is plaguing childcare providers in this state is causing veteran providers to close up shop is partially due to the unclear and inconsistent application of regulations. Personally, I've experienced many joys throughout my career. However, I've also experienced soul-crushing challenges. If I were to be honest, many times it makes me want to close up shop and go home. As a mother of five boys who, quite honestly, if I didn't work at a daycare, could not afford daycare. My husband and I are both college-educated. We chose to stay in Hutchinson where we both were raised, to remain around family and raise our boys, but of my five siblings and two sets of grandparents, they all still work today. And so we have committed to trying to help our community. But many times as a mom, I think of all the times I missed with my own children to create a space for someone else's children. When I have those moments and I think about closing shop, I think of a special needs little boy, Bonan Valix, who's a veteran, single-parent mother, manages a small business in this town, who makes too much money as a middle-class, single parent to qualify for any subsidies or for free early childhood services, and yet works 50 to 55 hours a week to take care of little Alex. Or I think of Corinne, an African-American mother of five, who's worked in our service industry in this town for three decades. A few weeks ago, I stepped into a restaurant, she stood at my table and then threw tears, thanked me, and yet communicated her fears for the future. It took her four years to get care for her youngest child. She worked split shifts over that course of four years, while her ailing and aging grandmother took care of her son in the morning, and her high school children took care of him in the evenings. The effect of this care has been evident on her son developmentally. It was traumatic when he started at daycare, because he had never been cared for by anyone but family. She was sharing with me about her deep fear, because this young boy now is thriving, he's emotionally connected to a little community of friends and of a teacher, but she's struggling with sending him to free UPK that would save her family $500 a month, and mom wouldn't have to work 50 or 55 hours a week. And yet, she's worried about her little one and what that transition might cost him. I think of a mother who I spoke to last week, who just recently moved into this community for a job offer, and she's got a six-month-old with no care in sight. She looked at me and she said, if I had known this is what it was going to be moving to Hutchinson, I would have never uprooted my family and moved here. I think of Ms. Brenda, today a 66-year-old, 20-year veteran infant teacher of Abundant Life, who worked in a 12-by-12 classroom every day, taking care of somebody else's children. See, she wasn't just a childcare worker, she became a part of our family. Childcare is an extension of community for most families today. See, she taught me how to be a mom 11 years ago. Most moms, every mom in this room, had no idea what we were doing when we had our first child. And if someone told us, we would have not done it again, and yet, some of us have signed up to do it five times. Ms. Brenda did that, and she never made over 975 an hour. That's crazy. That's an injustice.
Crazy.
Not to our children, not just to our children, but to the women that are doing this work. Yes, childcare is complex. Do we need more slots? Absolutely. But we need to understand where, how many. Do we need to invest in the childcare workforce? Absolutely. But how do we do that equally for all places? So that when new centers that open and can maybe pay more than small home providers, those home providers don't feel short-changed and then get access to PPP loans, because they don't run payroll like a bigger company. Do we need to reform and advocate on behalf of the regulatory agency? I will be the first in line. Do we need to create fair and equitable system to subsidize for providers so they can remain competitive and serve their families without sacrificing their own earnings? Will the funds we're requesting today solve this problem? No, but it'll be a start. And I believe with some of the childcare sustainability grants that honestly are being locked up at the State House and childcare facilities are not getting access to, we're working with some great people that are going to help us get our hands, for lack of a better word, on those monies. What is the true cost of childcare? I suggest you ask a different question. What's the cost if we don't care? Our primary goal today is to share with you some of the fundamental components of this, to show you how it'll affect our communities in years to come, that this investment will be a legacy of this community. We're not starting from scratch. As Denise has told you, this community has shown up for the childcare industry. It'll give you a picture of all of the things they've attempted to do over the years to subsidize and support this. There is a dedicated commitment on the part of the constituents of Reno County who not only voice their desire to see our elected officials join us in this endeavor, but have been putting their money where their mouth is to try and achieve this goal. Something unique to Kansas is our deep-rooted understanding of community, helping a neighbor in need. This has been evident in our community through a multitude of things, most recently, the Cottonwood Hills fire. Our community's dedication to not just respond to one fire five years ago, but to improve on that response that allowed us to respond any greater challenge with grit and grace. This reveals the resiliency in our community to not simply survive, but to thrive. As I thought about this, I was reminded of a story that was shared with me once. It's about a doctor who came upon a river, hears the cry of a drowning man, and he pulls that man out. He helps him to the shore and he gives him CPR. And about the time that man is doing well, he hears another cry. So he goes back into the river, and he pulls out yet another man and breathes life back into him, and then hears another cry. And it's just this constant sequence of pulling one out of the river. And as Desmond Tutu so famously said, "We must go up the river and see what's causing them to fall in the river." It's time we apply the same Kansas value to this challenge as we have to the others we faced, to go up the stream and see what the things we could do to add or improve upon that might ensure fewer parents, providers, and businesses don't need resuscitated because of the challenges added due to the lack of childcare. We believe that due to the work and efforts made leading up to this moment, the partnership with Bradford, we are poised as a community to bring sustainable and systemic solutions to these challenges and become a prototype for other communities. In doing so, we will leave a legacy that will far outlive any one of us. Leaders who face challenges such as these, they may not reap the harvest in this moment. However, this investment will be reaped in generations to come, and very possibly, we will ensure fewer people be pulled out of that river. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ashley and let her and Bradford talk about how it will specifically affect our futures.
I'm Ashley Webster. I am with CASITO Kits ITSN Program. If you want all of the letters, take me a minute.
I did not understand who you're with.
I'm with the ITSN Infant Toddler Specialist Network. We're a partnership between the University of Kansas and the K-State University. We are a program that works on improving quality and increasing slots for infants and toddlers throughout the state of Kansas. I'm one of 10 specialists in the states, and I am luckily to be local here in Hutchinson and be working with the Reno County Child Systems Program.
Excuse me. When you talk about infant program, what age you're talking, 4 to 4?
Zero to three.
Zero to three.
Yeah. And so the reason why I'm here today is I just wanted to talk about the impacts of zero to three and how investing in childcare and what the impacts are for zero-to-three children. And in order to do that, we have to talk about brain development. That's the only way I know to go with this. So I wanted to just talk for a moment about the brain as an organ and understanding that the brain is not like any other organ that we have. It is an organ, and it's classified as an organ, but it's not like the heart, it's not like the lungs, it's not fully developed at birth. It's actually quite opposite. It does, most of it's developed outside of birth. The heart, the lung, right, if their children are, if children are born prematurely, the heart and the lungs are concerned about it being fully developed. And so they keep the child in the hospital, they give steroids, because they want that to come to full, full development so that it can operate out. And as it grows, the heart and the lungs get bigger, but the function, the complexity of what that organ does, does not change. It just gets bigger with our age. The brain, on the other hand, is actually, the only way that it gets larger is through building complexity. It doesn't grow with the body. It won't grow unless connections are made. And the connections are made through those early interactions, through the environmental experiences that a child has, whether that's with their parents or whether that's with childcare providers. And in order to make sure that we understand that, it means that they have to be relationally connected with others, basically saying the brain only develops in complexity by having relational connections with people. And nowadays, what we need to understand is that children are connected relationally, as Heather was talking about, with our community within childcare systems. So when a child is born, 86 billion brain cells are at birth, but they're not connected. They're literally floating around. I know it sounds weird, but that's what happens. The only way that those brain cells are kept and matured and the complexity happens is if connections are made. And connections are only made at rapid, at a rapid rate during the zero-to-three years of age, which is the fundamental stage of brain development for the rest of your life. If you, if the brain development is not connected, if those brain cells are not connected between zero to three, that impacts their likelihood to make connections later in life, because it literally gets harder to make those connections past the age of three. And research has showed that when the brain is not, when a child is not in an environment where their brain is nourished and grown, that they've actually looked at PET scans and MRIs and looked at a child's brain at that age, and doctors have thought they were Alzheimer patients, because the brain is so small, because the connections were not made. And the reason why we need to invest in early childhood is because we need those connections to be made. But the only way those connections are made are through relationships, through quality care, through people who are taken care of so they can take care of our future children and the leaders that are going to come from these children that are cared for. The reality is, the zero-to-three years of age is the most flexible and willing-ready stage of brain development. More than 1 million new connections are formed every second during zero to three. After three, it does not happen that way. You have to work a lot harder. I mean, if you know anything about language development, they say, learn language at the youngest age as possible, because when you're in high school, guess how slow your brain's moving, and it's a lot harder to learn that language. I mean, anybody take Spanish three years in a row and still got nothing? I got bueno. That's what I got. I think that's good. But the reality is, is this is what is fundamental, is that zero-to-three age. But it's not just about learning language, it's about social-emotional regulation, it's about learning how to make the right decisions as a contributing adult. Research has shown that the most effective investment to prevent crime, to prevent substance abuse, teen pregnancy, high school dropout rate, is to invest in early childcare, is to invest in the early years. Because literally, the more you try to invest later on in life, the harder it is to actually fix the brain or change the brain. We have to invest now, because this is how we have people who come and are economic and are sitting in this room and able to say, I want to contribute to this community. So instead of needing to invest in substance abuse places later on in life, or add additional stuff to our prisons or to our police force, we need to make sure that children are being raised in a way that they know what the right decisions are and how to make those and how to self-regulate and how to get connected to people, so that they're connected to make the right choices later on in life. As Harvard University points out, it's easier and less costly to form strong brain connections during the early years than it is to fix it later on in life. And that's why we need to invest in early childcare now. And you're probably thinking, brain development's awesome, maybe I should have gone into that, right? Ask Bradford, he knows a lot about it, probably more than I do. Hopefully, he's not judging me.
No judgment, no judgment.
Judgment-free zone.
But the reality is, is the connection to early childhood is me. I'm the new norm. I'm the mother of three. I'm the mother of three children with a master's degree in early childhood with a husband who has a culinary degree from the top culinary institute in New York. And yet, we need childcare. We needed childcare when we were in New York for 12 years because we had no family. We need childcare today because all of our family still works because retirement is no longer 50. 67 and a half is what my dad tells me, at least. That's crazy, but that's real. And that means that even as two parents who work remotely and work at home, we can't care for our children and produce the quality and productivity that we need for our job. So I'm the new norm, and we need childcare. And we don't need people to babysit because I don't know if you know, but they don't sit on any babies, and if they do, they get in trouble. So we don't need babysitters. We need early childhood educators because they're building brains. They're partnering with me. They're partnering with parents to build the brains of children to make sure that they are functioning, successful, and contributing adults into our community. And not, this is not a rural or a city issue. This is a culture. This is the United States. This is everywhere issue. So supporting our childcare is investing in the future, and it's investing in our future leaders. We don't need another building. We need us to invest in the people that are caring for our children because if we lower their stress by being able to give them more money, by being able to give them health insurance, you can get better health insurance going to Starbucks than you can going into childcare. And they're not building brains, they're making coffee. I mean, it's really good. I'm not, hey, I really like Starbucks, but it's a very different skill set that you have to have, and they should be taken care of. Because if they come in stressed because they can't care for their children or because they can't pay their light bills, that stress is being passed on to my children, to our children. And that's impacting their brain development, and that's impacting our economic status in this community and beyond. That's all I have. I have slides if you want information on the brain.
All right. So thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the economic development elements of early care and education. And then also, I'll start by giving you sort of the difference between the childcare market study and sort of general knowledge that there's an issue. A few things. The first is, we all know there's a problem, right? I've been all across the state of Kansas and into Nebraska, and I've yet to find a community that's like, "Ah, well, no, we got childcare good. We're all set. We don't need you here." And, you know, there are multiple reasons for that, but one of the things that the childcare market study does is provides you with a, an actionable plan for how you want to create and build and develop your system of care, right? So one of the limitations for many counties, many communities, is that there's not this system. And what that'll do is pinpoint exactly by zip code, by census tract, exactly where it needs the highest for which ages, and allows you to then plan and to, and for businesses to plan. So it's, it's more than just a, a general sense. There's a huge other element of that, and that is, where does your community stand on access to quality early care and education, right? Because in order to make investments, you need to have the backing of the community. Your community needs to understand why you're doing what you're doing. You're all elected officials, right? You want to be able to convey, "Hey, this is why we're doing this." And what that, and then the final part of that market study is, I've yet to find funders who are willing to give me money if I don't tell them exactly why I need money. And what that market study does and has done in many communities now in Kansas is provide the basis for external funding, both grants and loans, that you simply don't have access to without that kind of detailed ability to then provide for a business plan for your community. So I hope that you all recognize that childcare is economic development. I looked at the report. There's workforce development is one of the, the next, I think it's the third highest point, but childcare is economic development, right? So for businesses, your childcare affects recruitment, retention, productivity, and absenteeism, right? General estimates are that for every 30 working days, you lose about two to childcare concerns if the family doesn't have access to consistent early care and education. That's a huge loss, right? I would like to thank the those of us who were able to work remotely, recognize all of the barriers that occurred because of the lack of access to care. I don't want to belabor that point, but my hope is that we all recognized how important that, that early care and education was, not just to the children themselves, as Ashley talked about, which is certainly my main passion, but I also really feel compelled to help understand the larger picture of childcare as, as economic development. We, we know that families who have access to care, what's the number one thing families fight about? Money, right? So if they have quality, affordable care, they don't have to worry about money. One of the things that's really tragic in the childcare industry is that oftentimes the people who are providing care are qualifying for subsidies because they don't make enough money, yet they're providing an invaluable service to the community, right? So what does it do? It frees up all of that latent talent, right? So you want people in the workforce, but in order to join the workforce, you have to have someone to raise, to develop those brains, to help build out competent human beings, right? What are the things that we want from a workforce? We want the ability to solve problems. We want the ability to work together, and we want the ability to regulate our emotions, right? Where do we learn these things? We learn them in very, very, very early on in our lives, birth to three. And so it's really critical that we recognize that this isn't just a sort of right now component. This is a legacy issue. This is a, a community, an opportunity to make a huge difference in the trajectory of your community from a, a child, family, and economic development perspective. Many times in our studies, we find that the people who do not have care are actually the highest educated of those versus those who do have care. So you've got this latent talent pool who's highly educated, could really contribute to your tax base, yet they're not able to work because they're caring for their children, which I would also say is probably not ideal if you want people who want to work but can't because of raising their children. That can be frustrating on both sides of that component. And then I just, you know, want to mention that the long-term benefits of access to quality, affordable care are just absolutely staggering from a health, economic productivity, incarceration, divorce, substance abuse. All of these things are mitigated as a result of access to care. But most importantly, as you think about what this will mean for you, you have the opportunity then to use the economic development component, combined with the market study, to then get external funding that will sustain what you want to accomplish, which is, you want to raise the next generation of, you know, Reno County residents, and you, you want your rural communities to be able to retain talent. They're, they're losing the, the people that are, that are growing up there. You'd love for them to come back, but, you know, most of the time, families have two student loans, you know, dual student loans, and they both have to work. And without access to care, it's very hard to recruit and retain them, particularly in rural communities. And so, you know, with that, I really hope to, to convey that when you look at your listings of what's most important and what your, your listening session said, the childcare is intertwined with multiple elements of those. You know, it'd be great to have housing, but if you're looking for families with, you know, to come work, they need housing, yes, but they also need childcare, right? I mean, those things are intimately linked. And so, and then when you're, when you're thinking about your, your workforce development component, I think the most important element there is, in order to get that labor force to provide workforce training and education, you, you need to be able to find it. And we know that people have left the workforce in droves, and not the least, you know, the, not the least reason for that is that access to care is a problem. And I, and I will say, just fundamentally, we see oftentimes families planning their families around when the next childcare slot is open. And I, I dare say that that's not a situation that we're all interested in, in occurring. I think, living in the United States, we're very much about freedom, freedom to do what we want. I think of pretty much no more sacred freedom than that of, of having a child, and yet, you know, we're, we're forcing families into a situation where they have to plan for when their first child is going to leave the infant class so that they can fill that empty slot with their own. And so, I, you know, I just, as you, as you consider these requests, recognizing that childcare is essentially like a utility at this point. If you don't have it, you're behind. And if you, if you can't support it, it's just as detrimental as not having electricity or internet or any of those other things. It's, it's the same economic impact. That's all I have.
Bear in mind that the chairman asked these presentations to be somewhat brief. I think he mentioned five minutes, but whatever.
I will be brief in my comments.
Go ahead. You're, you're fine.
So you guys received a copy of the systems brief that we put together, and I won't go over all of that, but I do hope you pay attention to the partners involved in K-Ready and the past and current efforts among our partners to collaborate and innovate. On page two, you'll find the joint request to the county and the city of Hutchinson for $9.8 million. I want to briefly go over with you why we believe this will be a one-time government, government investment in our local system and how we plan to approach this work to be sustainable in the future. The first part of the request is for $5 million, and it's for high-quality facilities. We don't know exactly what projects will come out of the market study, but we do know there will be a cost associated with the startup and licensing of new facilities and relicensing and expansion of current facilities. This would allow provider, current providers and centers access to funding to make quality improvements. We also can't control KDHE's license, licensing regulations and process, but we can provide funding to help providers and centers offset costs for KDHE compliance issues when most of these costs are unexpected. One example of that is we have a childcare center locally that has been in operation for over 20 years. They had to buy a shade structure this last year to be in compliance with licensing requirements. They've never had a shade structure before. Also, just to note, K-Ready and our Childcare Systems Group is developing an advocacy leg to work on state advocacy to barriers to provide, to providers and families. This is in its infancy, but we, but will provide invaluable as we work through regulatory red tape and bureaucracy at the state level. The next part of our request is premium pay for essential workers in the amount of 3.8 million. This would be grants for operations of licensed facilities modeled after the Childcare Ware of Kansas Grants for COVID Relief from 2023 through 2026. The market study is going to show us where opportunities to leverage public and private partnerships are in the future and how we can utilize the private business sector to help sustain, sustain and address the business model of childcare. By making this investment now, it will give the needed time for our partners to develop an approach for long-term sustainability. The simple truth is the largest cost to provide childcare is people. People who are the overhead in operations, it's people like Heather and her staff. And how we can innovate the business model to create some room in their budgets to increase wages and provide benefits, childcare providers and centers need the influx of additional unrestricted dollars to take care of their people, retain their amazing staff, and recruit more people into the field. And the final part of our request is $1 million for equity-focused services. These are ALIS families. So ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. These are families that are caught in the gap. They make too much to qualify for DCF services but don't make enough to live well. These are families who will turn down raises because the loss they feel financially is too great to justify the pay raise. Currently, families in Reno County are spending upwards of 17% of their household income on childcare in Reno County. For an ALIS families, it, it can be as much as 40%, leaving little to fund housing, food, and transportation. ALIS families often include skilled workforce and college-educated people. Thank you for allowing us to share with you what the future of Reno County could look like by making strategic investments now in early childcare, in early childcare and education. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have one. On your first request for the 5 million, it includes improving facilities, but it also improved, suggests that licensing and KDHE compliance. I've read several articles, some from your group and some from the state, that talk about how KH, KDHE comes in and said, "Here's the problem," but doesn't tell you how to fix it and so forth, and that you need more help from the state to change some of these things. Has anything been done in the state legislature this year to help any of those things?
So we know locally, our state legislators are aware of this problem and have been working towards solutions. We also know that KDHE is reviewing all of the childcare standards, and that's one of the main reasons why we're developing, developing an advocacy leg of K-Ready and the Systems Group to make movement on that. But one example that I can think of when we're talking about relicensing of a facility is if you have a facility like Heather runs, you know, it's 20 years old. If our market study comes back and says, "We need more infant slots." For her to just open another infant classroom, she's going to have to hire an architect, which is expensive, and then completely redo that room to be in compliance for that age level. So it's not as simple as just saying, "This is what we're doing." There's, there's lots of steps that you have to take.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Siller, that's one of the things that I noted when we, Randy and I met with Health Department here the other day, and to have a good review of what they had available as far as education, as far as PowerPoints, as far as information that they had available to those who wanted to do startups and who are already in business, that I think that was really good, and I think they need to be part of, of this to help that. And one of the good things, I think, that came out of it, and Lisa gave you the name of the person in charge of this childcare facility up at, at the state. And so maybe that's one of the things that not only Reno County needs to do, but in a coalition with other counties, they need to apply that pressure to them to say, "Hey, you know, we want to be safe. We're going to be safe." But some of these things that you come up with are just really on the verge of not being common sense. And so from that standpoint, I think that was a good early lesson. I thank Rand, thank Randy for putting this together with Carlos so, so that information would be out there to those that start up. And we have many regulations. And we have many regulations that probably aren't necessary, but I don't know what we can get done about them, okay? And that includes in every part of life. But I would say one thing that I gained out of this, and if I make, if you'll allow me, Chairman, to make a comment, is the thing that I learned about it was the early brain development that I hadn't thought about before. But as I look back over, and I'm sure you all can look back also, is that how important that mother was at that early stage and how important the person that, in our instance, okay, my wife started back to work when the youngest was two, and how important it was to have that neighbor over there who kept them learning. Now, it wasn't book learning, but it was real-life learning. And I guess I could say, how important, and thank you for those folks that did that, my mother, my wife.
Great comments. I maybe want to ask the commission here if we shouldn't pause for a second and look back at where we started. You know, I know there's a few other topics that we want to talk about today. I think they, you know, from a priority perspective are probably a little lower on the priority list. And so, I think we've generally addressed our three different priorities. I don't think anybody's here to talk about economic development specifically. So I think we should pause for a second, go back to the first recommendation from the task force that had 40-some different stakeholder meetings across the county and determined that, you know, childcare was the priority that we needed to focus on. And listening to all of this today, you know, perhaps we should have a discussion here with the rest of our time on, is there a number that we could allocate towards this priority that's been identified as our top priority? And then, you know, how do we kind of get the ball rolling on this? And then, you know, I know that maybe puts aside some of the other requests. I think, I think we can address those in due time, but if there is a number that we could potentially allocate and make some decisions, I think we could maybe get some work done here. So what's the other two commissioners feel on having a deeper conversation on whether there's a number we could, we could talk about today and a path forward on childcare?
Well, I think, Chairman, that's a difficult question to answer. And of course, we're here to make difficult decisions. But as I read back through the executive summary of the ARFA meetings and so forth, it is true that childcare came up more often, but in those meetings, workforce development, affordable housing were also significant issues. And I think that we need to make decisions that we can go back to five to seven years from now and be in our mind that we've made a difference. And that's why I, at this point, and I'm not for the large amount that Child Care Group is asking for, I think that we do have some concerns about, and this isn't your question, but I do have some concerns about our housing requests and so forth. But those will definitely make a difference for the next 20 years in Reno County. And I remember back when we suggested to the group that was going to meet on a county-wide basis that we would hear their recommendations, but there was no commitment on part of the commission to follow their recommendations. I also feel that the controlling group of the study, the executive group, might have taken the group studies a little bit towards one area more than I would have if I would have been in that group. And so, I appreciate all the past work and so forth. I just don't think that we can logically allocate 9.8 million. There was a question that one lady indicated in her closing statement that she's asking the city and county for 9.8. Is that a true statement? You're not asking for the county for 9.8?
That is correct. It's a joint proposal.
Excel spreadsheet on some things and looking at everybody and had some questions with regard to some of them. But Commissioner Friesen, if you're looking at some things, just set it out in the open?
Please.
I look at that economic development, that 1.2 million. In my opinion, that's good. If they get the grant, it's committed. If they don't get the grant, I think it comes back. I believe we talked about this in our commission meeting, it comes back to the county, all right? If I'm, if I'm looking at, and this is all, this is just my ideas, okay? And I'll be in trouble with our childcare people, I know. But I'm looking at, not my real trouble, just discussion points, okay? Lisa and Aubrey. We've already approved the 440,000 for the Hutch Fire Department trucks. And I often wonder if they've got 200,000 in their reserve, why don't they use part of that to put down on the, on the truck purposes since that's what it was geared to do anyway, okay? But that's, we've allocated that regardless. And so, I am, I'm looking at, the third part of this is at about 4.6 and 4.8. I won't argue that point or the other with regard to childcare. And then I would look at the economic development figure of 1.2, that it would come back to the county and that could be reallocated and maybe some of those funds could go to childcare. I would be looking at housing at 3,500,000 for interfaith housing and 500,000 for SCID housing, working together between those two organizations. And then I could go on from there. But if that's the three points, I think there's some things requested here that I think probably should not have, to me, aren't, should be a function of the business or organization that's asking for those. And I can go into further detail, but that should give you a start, Commissioner.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Where are we at on childcare?
On help, on childcare? 4.6 to 4.8. So fortunately, as much as I would like to give to everybody, the amount they ask for, I guess that's what we get the high dollar for sitting up here and trying to make those decisions with the information that we have, okay?
So I appreciate you getting the ball rolling. Thank you. I think the number in childcare is certainly half of the request and would, I think we should challenge the city of Hutch to match whatever we put out there. And I disagree with Commissioner Sellers that it's an excuse that they got less, that they should put in less. I think they have the largest population in the county and have a great responsibility in this effort, too, and should heed the feedback from the task force that looked into this. So certainly, they can have their own conversation on that. But I think if we decide on a number, we ought to challenge the city to match it, whatever it is. I also think we should challenge these agencies to look, like, I've always appreciated efforts to leverage public funding with private funding.
Yes.
And to the extent we can provide an incentive or a carrot to where, you know, perhaps, as an example, we're at 4 million today, but we could get to 5 if that was matched with private funding, then we could leverage that up another million dollars.
Commissioner Friesen, I think you're absolutely right because the people, the group that's representing childcare has said that it has to be a public-private to get started.
And I know, talked to Community Foundation a little bit about this, and they're like, you know, not saying we can't do it, but that's going to be a challenge. But same time, like, I can think, you know, this message to, you know, you put that in the conversation with private business. And I think there is, like, I know, like, my business, like, if I can see a path towards helping our people, you know, and leveraging this, I think, you know, it may be a little harder to raise, you know, a million dollars, as an example, from private benefactors, but, you know, perhaps the private industry could step up and see that this is actually an economic development challenge.
And I think the information that Bradford gave us with regards to their lost time and the cost of that business is a big factor that can be utilized.
So I feel pretty good about this 4.6 to 4.8 as an earmark, you know? I didn't hear the same confirmation from Commissioner Sellers. You know, it doesn't mean we can't do that, but do you think maybe, like, I sense there's at least a majority opinion here. Maybe we set that out there without making a decision today and ask the stakeholders go back. And I think there are some questions related to how this would be administered.
That's a point that I would like to bring up. I'm glad you brought it up. I know we saw this happen in our conversations with Fannie County, that they had an organization set up. And I hate layers of organization, okay? But I think this might be one of the times that, I think we've talked about that, that you have a core group of maybe seven to nine people that represents not only business and industry, but Health Department, childcare, knowledgeable people that everyone belongs to, and they can help them. And so, I thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, you know, certainly, you know, it's clear the United Way has taken the lead in this, and it's appreciative. The, you know, if we step up another layer above that, the Community Foundation has really, you know, provided the overall kind of basis for supporting the efforts. And, you know, maybe we go back to them and say, hey, okay, why don't you guys get together and see how this could be administered? If we add, you know, 4.6 to 4.8 million on the table, I, I think there's very few agencies, maybe one, that, you know, you can, you can drop in this kind of money and feel that they have the experience to administrate it.
Bringing up one question that I should have thought of and asked is how much was businesses like Tyson, Superior, Collins involved in your program? Did they know anything about it? How much were they involved with the coalition? Since there would be other real recipients of it, and maybe if they haven't been involved, it's time. Okay, not, you don't have to answer that, but I wish.
So I'll just say, when the chamber did task force back in 2015, many businesses were involved in it back then. And then we have a plan to involve them through the market study.
Okay.
So yes, they will be included.
The hospitals and schools have been involved in this coalition.
That's why.
Huge employers.
I want to make sure it's clear that I, and I think the rest of the commission understands there are other priorities that have been presented here and that I, I think we're still weighing. I think, I think it's important to address the, you know, the number one issue a little more in detail. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Sellers here. Like, you heard our two thoughts. Is there, where are you at?
I can live with your lower number there at this point in time.
Okay.
It's a starting point that we set, and we'll go from there. Is that kind of where you're looking at?
Yeah, I think some of us wanted to make this meeting to kind of put monies into buckets.
And I think.
And not buckets with lids on them at this point, but buckets. And I think that's a good start for a bucket.
What do you think about Commissioner Hurst's bucket of 3.5 million for housing?
Well, I thought he said 3.5 and 500.
Yes. So 4 million?
4 million for housing.
And I guess that's where I would say that I would go 4 million and 500,000 for a bucket at this point. I think that if, if there's any group that has come to us with a proposal and done their homework and shown the willingness of the rural communities to work with them, it's interfaith housing. You've read their proposal. It's got letters of support from every rural community in Reno County. And when I entered into this and found that we had 12 million dollars to do something good for the county for the future, I wanted to make sure that we did something that was sustainable. And that's why I'm pushing so hard for housing improvement. And whether it be interfaith housing or a combination of interfaith housing and SCID, I personally like them to go back and communicate and talk together and see if we couldn't have almost one bucket there.
Okay. So it sounds like from housing, there's a range of about four to four and a half as an earmark. Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay. So let me, let me propose a couple things to set this off onto a further discussion. I think we've been clear here. Are we all in agreement we should challenge the city to match it?
I think we should challenge them to do as much as they can do to match the 4 million when they've only got six. It just ain't going to happen. You know, politics, you ought to be at least reasonable in your expectations. So I think since we're saying it's a priority, they ought to make it a priority.
Do we let, how do we go about notifying the city of that?
I think they've been notified.
Let's see, one, two, three.
Guess where this falls to?
At least eight notifiers present. At least eight notifiers present.
John Green.
So if, to get this moving, I think, you know, we've set a number in place. I think this gives stakeholders an opportunity to take something to the city of Hutch with the challenge. They can see how much they're interested in this. And then I think it would be good to come back to the commission and give us the summary of where you're at. Tell us how you would recommend administering it, who your partners are, how long, you know, timeframe. I think there is interest, at least from my point of view, that we could allocate that so long as there's, you know, some sort of fiduciary behind the scenes that we could deliver that money to and a trust that the program gets administrated. Like, I don't think we're the ones that are qualified to administrate the funding.
Close to the county as a whole, doesn't it, Randy?
We're the ones that would be responsible. We can work with, we can contract with others, Community Foundation or someone else, but at the end, the county has to, is responsible for the money.
But if we, as an example, said, you know, here's our criteria, here's the expectations, here's the particular federal statutes, here's an agreement.
Yeah.
We're going to give you this money, administrate it appropriately, and we'll-
With the memorandum of understanding and some safeguards, yes.
So is that something we're willing to allow to be worked on as a memorandum of understanding? Or we want to leave?
Personally, I think we're just a little bit early. I think you're making great progress today, but to, I think we ought to decide on numbers before we create the memorandum of understanding.
Well-
And obviously, you know, there's some other buckets here that I think you ought to talk about.
Well, how about we empower the stakeholders to give us a framework of what it is, how you would do this, and that would be the basis for some sort of memo in the future? So we've got childcare, we've got potential number on housing, and like, I'm flexible on that. Like, I buy into the idea that, like, I hear what Commissioner Sellers is saying, like, I know, but I don't know how, like, if you don't have, like, you know, you got to build brains first before you build houses. So like, I'm a little more on the side of, you know, maybe allocating more to childcare. And so I think some of those decisions might be better informed as you come back with more information. So I, so to your point, like, we got other things here. So if you looked at, like, the top end, if I rounded four point eight to five and then added four and a half, that's nine and a half. What is our actual number?
Ten million, nine hundred and forty thousand.
Twelve million, forty-two thousand total, and then one point two, if that is used from the economic development.
So, okay, what have we allocated already out of the twelve?
One point two. And then you haven't made a decision on the four hundred and forty thousand for the fire department, whether that's ARPA money or county money.
One point six.
Well, if it's all ARPA money, it's either ten million, seven hundred and forty thousand or ten million, nine forty.
So I think we could take some of the four forty out of the budget. Not a lot of it, but I think we could take at least one hundred and forty thousand, make that three hundred out of ARPA. I just, the fire chief has said that he will not be putting capital expense into his next year budget, and so that ought to help us with Fire District Two in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four.
I think since we're partner with them, we need to look and make sure that they utilize that reserve that they have gotten out of the Colorado fires back towards fire prevention and not just hold it there.
Didn't you ask him that?
I asked him how much they had.
Okay, so-
Two hundred plus.
Hey, I thought he said it was going to go into equipment.
I did, too.
Well, we can get some clarity from the fire chief. So the two big buckets here are about nine and a half. Depending on how you run the math, there's another million or so left. Is that a fair?
Ten million, eight hundred.
A fair math-ish.
It's rough, but in that area.
So let's just say we have a bucket of a million dollars left in this concept of two buckets plus what's already allocated. I feel like that's actually a pretty good stopping point for today. I think we can have some conversations if we say there's a million left, there's some other priorities on here, there's the potential for these buckets to change, but if we kind of set that, you know, in front of the stakeholders and get some feedback, like, I don't know that we're going to, with, you know, I think, you know, I was hopeful this would be about a two-hour meeting. I feel like we made a lot of good progress, and if we dive into a lot of detail, I think we could mess up some of the progress we've made today. Is there anyone here that wants to, like, say something that they didn't get to say? I know we said everybody would have time to talk, but, okay.
I agree with your comments. I think that another priority to me is that the county has some needs, that the county administrator has made aware to us, particularly in the health and emergency management areas, that I think should be priorities as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
We talk about those amounts later.
And that's the same way. I feel that our real fire departments need to be taken care of as well as, I really want to see our emergency management location be as economical as possible because we do have facilities available to them that could be used without renovating or spending a lot of money with that.
Well, maybe what we should do is charge the county administrator with providing a recommendation back for the balance here. And like I said, I think there's some fluidity in the numbers, but this is a good-
I like that word, fluidity. I can't say that.
But-
For the impresiveness.
But we can, I think it's, we've made clear generally where we're at, and we can get some further stakeholder input. Randy, when should we meet again? What's the next?
I would say relatively soon, but I, part of that would be a question to SCID and Interfaith Housing, for them, the plans that they have to get those actually rolling and to be able to get that amount of work done in time, when would they need to start, or when would they need to know they have money? I mean, you know, in general, there's money, but it hasn't been split. Childcare, if you're saying the bucket's five million, they have an idea, it's not all that they requested, but-
We're still in that process of not getting a report back either.
What if we planned on a study session for the, after our normal meeting on the twenty-sixth, which is a month from today?
I think that's good timing.
Commissioner Hearst?
That's April the twenty-sixth, right?
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good?
As far as I know.
Okay. Well, let's plan on that. Is that okay, Randy?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you'll work on that last bucket, kind of see if you can work with stakeholders and the commissioners and see if you can find some common ground. Any final comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Sellers, anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. This is very valuable to me, and I think the rest of the commission, and appreciate all of the work. I know you guys have been working really hard, so thank you. This is certainly a challenge for us, and we appreciate your patience as we continue our work. Send me-